Good evening, everybody. Sorry to keep you waiting. Too much ginger beer with my Spam Egg and chips this evening. If I can ask you all to take your seats, please. So, a little housekeeping to get us kicked off. Thanks, everybody, for joining this evening. It's a meeting of Froom Town Council. I'm Andy Jones, and I'll be chairing. We've got people online and here in the room, so if you do want to speak, please make sure you're using a microphone. The emergency exit is where it's always been, in the corner of the room over there. Nobody's moved it yet. And the assembly point at the far side of the car park. Toilets at the end of the corridor on the right, with the accessible toilet near the lift. I think you've all helped yourselves to hot drinks and things, but carry on through the meeting. I won't be offended if you wander over for a drink. Tonight, Paul will clerk. We've got Laura, Sarah, Becca, and Rachel managing the minutes, questions board, participants, settings, and all the IT stuff. The meeting is being recorded and will be made available on our YouTube channel. For those councillors, if any attending via Zoom, please use the yellow hand. And anybody else with questions online, please use the Q&amp;A board. So first up on the agenda is apologies for absence. Paul?
We've got apologies from Lisa Merriweather and Andy Rintmore.
Okay, I've got Fiona proposing that we accept those. I've got Sarah seconding all those in favour.
Unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much. Minutes of the last meeting on the 15th of January? Oh, yes, sorry. Have we got any declarations of interest? Everybody's disinterested. Okay. Minutes of the January meeting. Mark?
Yeah, there's a point on there about parking Weymouth Road. I was just wondering if we've had another update on that yet.
We have changed. Take that.
We do have an update, thank you. So I have received a copy of a letter from Steve Deacon, who's the Parking Services Manager at Somerset Council. The letter will be sent out to residents of Weymouth Road shortly. It confirms that our request for the scheme to be withdrawn has been accepted. It goes on to say that due to the fact that the signs for the residents' parking mysteriously disappeared during the middle of the night and haven't been replaced, that this scheme or the requirement for permits is no longer there. So effectively, the scheme is now ineffective. Also, God's on to say that even though it is ineffective, they still need to go through the legal process of removing the traffic regulation order, which will be advertised by the end of the month. People will still have an opportunity to respond to that notification. They will then come back to us to see if we have any comment, and the scheme will be removed.
Okay, and is that the point, when refunds will be made to residents?
They have also confirmed that refunds will be made to residents, yes.
Okay. Thanks for raising that, Mark. Anybody else got anything to raise on the minutes of the last meeting? If not, can I have somebody propose that we accept them? Anita? Steve seconding. All those in favour? I think that's unanimous again, Paul. Okay, thank you all. We now move on to item two, which is questions and comments from the public. I'm going to start by asking Lindsay from Canteen to give us an update on what's going on over there. Please.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Lindsay Mayhew, one of the organisers of Canteen, a community pop-up restaurant which we have been holding in the Holy Trinity Church Hall. On Tuesday will be our third event. We had one in October and one in November, and the one on Tuesday is another test event to try out different days, different menus, just to test the appetite, as it were, for the event in Froom. The event Canteen is part and organised by the Froom Food Network as part of the Future Shed and Green and Healthy Froom residency, which you all will be aware of because of the involvement of Froom Town Council. I've come along today really because I wanted to get in front of all you very well-connected people to just make sure you're aware of it, to disseminate the information into your communities. Although both events were extremely well-intended, and in particular the first event, we sold out of food within two hours, we really want to reach a wider demographic across Froom. That said, it's not a event particularly targeting vulnerable people. It's for all. It's a social eating community project, and it's about neighbourhoods, community, bringing people together, and encouraging people to enjoy each other's company, you know, a big Froom value, but also to enjoy delicious and wholesome food that's grown locally. So if anyone is involved in any WhatsApp groups or networks, it's advertised on lots of different places. We've got a great feature in the Froom Times tomorrow, hopefully, which will give you some more information. And I've also popped some leaflets on your tables as well. The concept of it, just I must say, is to pay what you can. So when you turn up, you pay what you think that the meal is worth that day. For example, this week, our meat option is pork and cider pie with a rhubarb full, and you can come in and pay whatever value you think that is worth to you. That might be £2, £5, £10. Or we have a scheme where you can say, can I have a token for Joe? And you can get your meal for free to avoid any embarrassment. Over the last two events, we saw 40 tokens for Joe taken up at the events, which we were really pleased about. Other wins, I really think was great, because we saw a lot of solo people coming along, and we had families, we had babies, and we had a number of octogenarians as well. So it was really well-attended, and I absolutely love seeing a lot of elderly people coming alone, just really getting stuck in and enjoying the evening. So if you could spread the word, that would be brilliant. And if you want any more information, as I said, it's in the, some leaflets on the table.
Can you just remind us of the date again?
It's the 18th of February, which is Tuesday. Starts at 5:00 PM. The eating time, it's not great always for working people, but it's 5:00 to 7:00 PM. But that's because the food sells out really quickly. So we started at 5:00 to allow for families. So if you can come along, we'll have enough food from 5:00 and 7:00, we're confident. But last time, it sold out really quickly. But appreciate people working, commuting, that kind of thing.
Great, sounds good. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the public? Gav, you've got? And then Sarah?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if the town council could investigate the extended taxi rank at the back of Cork Street and when and why it got taken away from taxi usage? I understand that people think there's a shortage of taxis, but we do on quite occasion get over eight taxis down there trying to squeeze into four bays. And that area at the moment is just left with free parking in. It's not enforced by anybody, and it would be really handy if we could have that space back at some point.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask Paul to take that as town clerk. Mel, have you got a follow-on on that?
I think it's the transfer from Mendip, who used to police that area, to Somerset, which has changed, and people do park there all the time now. So you're right, and there's a shortage when there's more than four taxis. Just like to confirm that.
Okay, thank you. Sarah?
Thanks, Andy. I want to talk rubbish. I think this is probably one for Paul. I would like to know what we can do in relation to the ID Verdi contract currently operated by Somerset in regard to town centre in particular, but town-wide litter and refuse. The town centre for the last few weekends has been pretty disgraceful. And, you know, if I'd been a tourist the last few weekends, I'd have probably not come back, quite frankly. And living where I do, right in the centre of town, is very obvious. There are a couple of particular hotspots which are right by the bus stops in town, so Outside Boots and outside the Archangel. And I don't think it's necessarily for want of people trying to dispose of their rubbish. It's just that the bins are really full to overflowing, and people are piling up their excess around the sides of the bins, and then it gets blown around everywhere. So sitting at the bus stops is pretty unpleasant. Walking out of the Archangel, walking out of the shops around there is pretty unpleasant. I'm wondering if there's any pressure that we can put on anyone at all to up that game?
Yeah, we'll get in touch with the Somerset Council Contract Manager and any contacts we have with ID Verdi as well, and just sort of find out what's going on, and we'll report back.
Okay, thanks. Nick?
I'll come in on that as well, because we met earlier in the week about it. I mean, just this week, and we're only Wednesday, five different people, one of whom has kindly attended tonight, have approached me about the state of our streets. It's really upsetting to see how dirty they look, how unswept. And Sarah sort of inferred part of the problem is that the contract for cleaning our streets is a private company at the moment, who are contracted by Somerset. And when the member of staff whose job that is is absent, of course, they've got to have a day off, there doesn't appear to be any regular backup plan. In addition, the approach from the train station into the town is really, it's really unpleasant. You come into Froom to visit, visitors come in, and it is so overgrown, so much rubbish lying around there. I think that this is exacerbated also by the arrangement that is at the moment with commercial businesses to have their rubbish collected by private contractors. So in effect, two different organisations responsible for collecting rubbish in the town centre, neither of whom work for the council directly. I know there's a move for the Somerset Council to look at bringing the collection of rubbish in-house. And what I would ask, please, is could we, when you write to them, Paul, could you ask that we could have a discussion whereby they consider the daily collection of commercial rubbish, as it happens in lots of other towns and cities around the country, at a specific time? Which would mean that we wouldn't need so many large, empty wheelie bins overflowing with rubbish left waiting for collection, or piles of rubbish left at the end of Cheep Street or the bottom of Stony Street. Those businesses have those arrangements with private contractors at the moment pay. I'm pretty sure they'd be happy to pay for a regular service that actually kept the streets clean and tidy. So if I could ask, please, that we could perhaps write to, or you could write, the director of services who is responsible for that. So when there is a renegotiation of the contract, this can be part of the discussion. Thanks.
Will do. And I think it was Oversight Committee last week, the committee authorised the recruitment of a town centre coordinator as well, and that's a key part of their job description, too. So there's pressure being established. It's building, yeah. Will do, Nick.
Did you have another question?
One more thing while I've got the microphone. Sorry, I'll be talking a lot this evening. I was contacted a couple of days ago by a local businessman who's been involved in developing commercial and residential property in the town for decades, literally hundreds and hundreds of properties. As we know, many of the town centre properties are listed, and this means that any planned works need the approval of the Conservation Officer. As I understand it, there's been a change of the Conservation Officer recently, and this has led to an even more, I'm afraid to say dysfunctional, planning department. While everyone can understand that staff leave, and at times their roles can be hard to fill, we now have a situation where delays are running into more than a year at times. And some of that is directly linked to staff failing to respond to calls and emails, and on several occasions to even not turn up for appointments that they've made. And the costs of this to local business runs into tens, if not hundreds of thousands of pounds, and it causes reputational damage to the town and the county council. So can I ask that our town clerk writes to the director of services responsible for this function, and asks that they conduct an urgent review into the planning department, and reports back to us, hopefully with a commitment to improve performance?
Thanks, Nick. Jane, do you want to comment on that one?
Difficult to comment on, but yes, you know, we are aware that there are backlog and issues with applications being determined. So yes, I can work with Paul to get something off to the service manager.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Anne?
Hello. I've been asked to raise a question on behalf of a resident who couldn't be here tonight. And I think it's probably another one for Somerset. It relates to the corner just along here, and I can't move the mic because you won't be able to hear me, but just along here, Christchurch Street and the Wesley Slope corner. So I'm speaking for him. I often walk along the pavement of this junction, and there are two problems affecting the safety of pedestrians. The first is the overgrown shrubs and trees that grow over the pavement. These force one to walk in on the edge of the pavement with very fast vehicles turning from Wesley Slope into Christchurch Road. Perhaps the council could ask the owners to cut these bushes back. The second is the drain in the road that needs cleaning. When it rains, a large puddle forms there, and one gets soaked if a vehicle passes. Would you ask the appropriate authority to clear the drain?
Thank you, Anne. Is that something you, yeah, Paul will pick that up and chase it through for us.
Thank you, and I'll get back to the resident to let him know that that's what's happening.
The drain on that corner is something that we've complained about over the last few years repeatedly with no progress, but I'll do it again.
Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Adam Boydin?
Thank you. Adam Boydin, Froom North. Can't see with my glasses on. So there's a few planning things you're no doubt aware of. Saxon Vale, Selwood Garden Community, Oldford Hill, Pax Saddle, the Stars Hill and Portway decisions. I won't go on about those. There's a, there was a meeting today at Somerset Council in Bridgewater, which is why no one else is here, because I didn't make it, and they did very long. And they agreed staff restructuring and staff cuts for Somerset Council of 555 full-time equivalent staff, 555. That's 10% of the workforce going by April. So there's a bit of churn, there's a lot of uncertainty amongst staff, there's a lot of disruption, which is coming out in the things I'm hearing about Conservation Officer, planning enforcement, and so on. We will be able to raise council tax at Somerset Council by seven and a half percent rather than the usual 4.99 for next year to help avoid a Section 114 notice and effective bankruptcy. But we still need capitalisation direction from government, which is not certain yet. But there's a meeting in March now, 5th of March, to determine budget and council tax for Somerset Council. And it really helps when the town council takes over things which you can run better and pay for locally. It really does, because we know that things will continue. So that's really good. How many councils do you want, one or two basically per ward from the 2027 Somerset Council elections? There's a Boundary Commission consultation, open consultation until the 4th of March. I've proposed that we have two, as in north, west, and east. It continues, I think it works well, with pretty much unchanged boundaries. But others are put in one member wards, which splits Froom into five and diverts the rural area to a massive area called Mendip North East or something. So if you would like either of those, please have your say by the 4th of March. Mendip's Local Plan Part Two examination of, which includes one site in Froom North Parade Car Park, part of, is from the 11th of March. There's obviously the Somerset Local Plan Call for Sites and Workshop here the other day. There's no Wessex devolution this time round. We've had the news. There's also some good news. Bathing Water was designated last year at Farley Hungerford, so that means all the River Froom upstream may be in for improvements. There's a steering group meeting on Monday I'm going to online for that. Also, me and Steve met Wessex Water a couple of weeks ago with Anna Sabine, and they are committed, they do remain committed to mitigating and managing the fly nuisance that was there up to two years ago through the netting. They are committed, and that's very good to see. And lastly, the leisure centre, and you raised this last time, and I just didn't make it in time. I went to see the leisure centre manager the next day, I just turned up. And also, I went to the meet the manager session, which was the end of January, where about eight users of the leisure centre presented their concerns. There was a long snagging list, and it remains a long snagging list, which they're working through. But unfortunately, the manager's leaving tomorrow, and they're advertising for a new manager. And in the meantime, the old manager, the other Adam, will look after it. So obviously, there's an issue with the leisure centre and maintenance. But I'm trying to arrange a Somerset Officers, Somerset Councils meeting firstly, and then a local one as well. I don't know if you had any response from your inquiries on that. And if there's any other questions for me, I'm the Somerset Council in the room. Thanks.
On the very last point there, Federica, the executive cabinet member, if that's the right term.
Yes, executive member.
Yeah, has offered to meet up with me to sort of chat this through. So we're trying to arrange a date.
Thank you. And also, I think leader of Somerset Council, Bill Reverence, might be online?
Yes, I was about to invite Bill to talk to us if he's available. Can we get Bill online? If he's got anything to say.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak in your town council meeting. I was interested to see the item from on your agenda regarding devolution from Somerset Council. Just wanted to assure you of our continued enthusiasm for devolution to Froom Town Council. Very much, I've read with interest your prospectus around that, and just want to reiterate our firm commitment to that devolution agenda. As Adams alluded to, we do have a fair amount of churn of staff at the moment, so please bear with us if things don't go at the pace that you would like to. But it's no lack of commitment on our part that's leading to that. I just wanted to give that assurance. I just wanted to mention the transfer of weekly markets that's also on your agenda, if I may. I took the decision yesterday to go ahead with the devolution. When I was first presented with it, it was apparent that there hadn't been, in my view, sufficient consultation with some of the market traders. And I just wanted to revisit that to get the view of the market traders there. And I would urge you to work very closely with them. Obviously, it's their income, the performance of the markets, and there was some considerable anxiety over what the future of the markets might be. So I would just like to reiterate that need for consultation with those people who rely on that for their daily income. So I do appreciate, I would appreciate it if you could bear that in mind as you take over that service. And thank you so much for all that you do for your residents. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Bill.
Yeah, just to reassure you, Bill, that it was today, two of our staff were down at the market, the Wensley Market, talking to the traders, and that conversation is ongoing and continuing. So rest assured.
Thank you. Fiona and Anna asked Steve to update on some planning issues.
Can I ask a question to Bill if he's still there, if that's all right? I happened to see on LinkedIn the other day that Somerset Council are running, developing a new economic strategy for Somerset, and you've got a couple of engagement events. But we're in Taunton and Yeovil. I then had a little look at your Somerset Growth Development Board, and it says in the blurb that it's people from all over Somerset. There are 12 people on the list. Seven of them are based in Taunton, from what I could see, and the closest I could find of Froom was Street. So I just want to know what we together can do with Froom Town Council and with you can do to make sure that Froom is the fourth-largest town in Somerset, and its needs and its sort of potential is sort of captured in this new strategy that's being developed?
Yeah, absolutely. Pleased to, you can, the consultation isn't just about events that you can attend. I appreciate to have been in locations that are some distance away. Very happy to engage with businesses, either one-to-one or through the Chamber of Commerce or through the Somerset Chamber as well. The Federation of Small Businesses is also represented. I've not looked at the home addresses of all the people that were on the board, but we did try and get a geographic spread across the area, but we were trying to get a gender and a sectoral spread as well.
You haven't done very well on that. Only three.
Okay, okay, I'll take that one on the chin.
And this is from their LinkedIn profile, so it could be wrong, but I did check on everyone. But no, thank you. I mean, maybe I can ask Peter, as our Economic Development and Regeneration Manager, to maybe have a conversation with Mike Rigby, who I think is the lead councillor for this, around how we can pull in?
Seems to make sense. Thank you, Peter, if you'll pick that up. Thanks. Thank you very much, Bill. And Steve, can you give us an update on some planning issues?
Yeah, very quickly, because Adam's touched on them before. I'll just very quickly run through what's gone on the last six weeks or so. As you know, the Pax Saddle application was refused. We're probably waiting for that to come back at some point. Selwood Garden Community was probably the big one. That was due to go back to the Somerset Planning Meeting on the 4th of February. The Secretary of State decided to call it in the day before, which was really quite annoying. And yeah, it's, in my view, in our view, I think it just takes away the decision from local people. So don't really agree with that at all. We don't know what's happening in the public inquiry yet. I guess Somerset East Planning Committee need to formulate a position on that, and once we know that, we'll feed into that and try and get moving on that. The battery storage at Styles Hill, that was also refused. It was recommended for approval, but I think there was just too many concerns about the close proximity to the housing, really. Obviously, we do know we need renewable energy infrastructure, so hopefully an agreement can come on that. The lucky chance that Portway got the solar panels, which I think was the right decision. Everyone worked on that. And the Oldford Development, you may have been to the public engagement on that. That's happened recently. We've met with them. We've also met with Berkeley Parish Council. As ever, our strategy on all of these things is to be pragmatic and also engage with all parties to try and get the best. And that's exactly the approach we'll take on all of these things going forward.
Thanks, Steve. Max, did you want to raise something? No? Okay, thanks. Anything else online, Rachel, Becca? No. Okay. In that case, I think we can move to item three on the agenda. And I welcome Claire Moody, Police and Crime Commissioner for the area, to give us a short presentation. Thank you.
Oh, actually worked. Thank you very much. And thank you for the invitation to come here this evening. First of all, I'd just like to say how fabulous it is to stand here on a First of all, I'd just like to say how fabulous it is to stand here on a Wednesday evening, I think, and see so many of you and clearly what is a very engaged and very active town councils. So I'm delighted to have the chance to come and talk with you this evening. What I'll do, if that's all right, is I will speak for, I don't know, I say five, probably 10 minutes. But I'd really welcome the chance to take questions as well and just to hear from you, because that goes to the core of what my role is as Police and Crime Commissioner. Because I have to admit, it is not the most widely known of roles. So I appreciate the chance to be able to talk to you about it. And I would love to think that after this evening as well, you might actually go out and talk to other people and say what the PCC does and what the purpose of the PCC is, and that you've actually met one. The core of the role, the reason for the role being established, is in effect for the PCC to be that connection between communities and the kind of strategic direction of, in this case, Avon and Somerset Police. What I will be very, very clear about, what the PCC is not, is it is not an operational policing role. And neither should it ever be that. It is not right to have political interference in day-to-day policing decisions. And I'd like to be really clear about that. But that connectivity and that strategic role is fundamental, I think, to the accountability of policing to communities. It's often talked about that policing is the community and the community are the police. And that is at the core of, and is actually envied by other countries in terms of that grounding principle in policing. So what does that actually mean on a day-to-day basis? What does that strategic role actually do day in, day out? I think a second way to frame, you know, my purpose, if you like, is that every newly elected Police and Crime Commissioner has to spend time developing a strategic document, a plan, for their term of office. And those set the priorities that I hold Avon and Somerset Police to account for the years that I am in office. And these priorities don't magically spring up from nowhere. They are, you also do also actually have a very distracting cute dog in the room as well. Those priorities have come from my time campaigning, you know, in the run-up to the election last May, when I was elected. And also from these conversations I've been having since and working with a lot of community groups and organisations since I was elected. So that plan was agreed with the Police and Crime Panel and in discussions with Avon and Somerset Police. It was finalised just before Christmas. And it explicitly includes five priorities in it. And these are five priorities, i.e. it is now my job to make sure that you see a difference in over the coming five years, well, four years in my term of office. In fact, three and a quarter left in my term of office, not that I'm counting. So the first of those priorities is about strengthening neighbourhood policing. And I should have introduced actually before I stood up. I'm sure you all know Rachel and Gary, who are in your neighbourhood policing team and I'm sure are very familiar to you. And also Jo Haywood-Mealan, who's here with me as well, who is my staff officer and connects into policing and educates me on policing as well. But that first priority is around that strengthening neighbourhood policing. Because I know how much of a difference that makes in communities, that visibility. It builds trust and confidence, having that relationship directly with policing. And it has an impact on what happens in communities as well, if there is that strong neighbourhood team as well. I'm really pleased to say that we have had, just last week, an announcement of a further £100 million of investment from the government. That follows the first £100 million that was announced before Christmas, that will also go into neighbourhood policing and reinforcing our neighbourhood policing teams. My second priority is that of reducing violent crime. And there are two clear strands of work underneath that. The first one is reducing serious youth violence. And that shouldn't come as any surprise to anyone in this room or elsewhere in Avon and Somerset as to why that would be a priority for policing. We have had far too many high-profile cases of murders of young people. But that is just the tip of an iceberg of incidents that we have around the region. And it is really important, obviously, that we respond to those incidents when they happen. But for me, crucially, also that we get ahead of those incidents and that we work in the prevention space with young people as well. So that's the first strand of work under reducing violent crime. The second strand of that work, and anyone who knows me or has followed any of my work at any point will recognise this second strand, which is about violence against women and girls. And again, that is very clearly about response to that. And it is also about the, again, where we can, prevention as well. I could spend the rest of the evening, never mind the rest of your meeting, talking about both of those pieces of work and what we need to do under those. What I will highlight is, on the first priority around neighbourhood policing, is that there are now, not just that extra investment, but also there is work going on inside Avon and Somerset Police, led by the Chief Constable Sarah Crew, around actually shifting kind of the resourcing around inside policing, the existing resourcing, as well as that additional resourcing I was talking to, as to how we can refocus some of the work into, you know, kind of the areas, into that geographical focus. So I'm genuinely excited about that. It will take time. It should take time because it needs to be done with care and make sure it's done effectively. On those priorities I was just talking about now, under reducing violent crime, again, a big piece of work that I'm again really excited about is introducing, running a pilot on changing the way that domestic abuse is investigated and the way it works. It's following a pilot that was run here in Avon and Somerset on rape and serious sexual offences. That is now a national operating model. We're now looking at the same six pillars of that work and how that could be done effectively to be perpetrator-focused, but victim-centred in responding to domestic abuse as well. So there is already work happening in that sphere. The third priority is around preventing crime. I've talked about that in the serious youth violence space, very importantly. But there are other areas of prevention. There's rural crime prevention. There is road safety and the work in prevention. You know, you've got very active community speed watch, but other ways that we can address road safety. There are other areas, retail crime, where we need to look more closely at prevention and opportunities there too. Fourthly, supporting victims of crime and how we make sure that they get the response, that victims get the response they need to get. And then finally, a little topically, given a news story yesterday, but it is also around standards in policing. And for me, that is obviously around the standards that police officers and staff are held to account to and the vetting procedures, which was in the news yesterday. But it's also for me, that is also about supporting the police officers and staff to be the best police officers and staff that they can be, that they can reach those high standards that the overwhelming majority of the police service want to reach. So it's that enabling of officers and staff as well. So I thought the best way to illustrate some of that was to give you a very quick run-through of things that happened in my diary during the week. So on Monday, for example, I had my weekly one-to-one with the Chief Constable. Again, that goes to my scrutiny and governance role. I also, and these are just in isolated meetings, so you can imagine there are a few that go on. But I also met with a guy called Rick Muir, who is the chief executive of the Police Foundation, which is the policing think tank. That's really important in terms of making sure we're using evidence bases, that for me, it informs that kind of policymaking side of things, that we have a proper thought through, and certainly from my office as well, that we run that kind of in a thoughtful and informed way. Tuesday, I spoke to students at Strode College. And I also met an organisation called Action Against Fox Hunting. So it was around that kind of rural crime or rural policing elements. Today, there has been an Majesty's Inspectorate of Constabulary or inspection visit around integrity in policing. That goes to those policing standards I was talking about, and they interviewed me today. But also this afternoon, I had a round table with Jess Phillips on violence against women and girls and the commissioning of services in that sphere too. I obviously had to attend that online and couldn't get up to the Home Office today. But I have been to the Home Office for others of these round tables. And again, it's that voice that, you know, we can put into the work that goes on. We do, I do, through my office, there is a lot of commissioning work, particularly around independent domestic violence advisers and independent sexual violence advisers. Obviously, I'm here this evening, which I am delighted to be. And yes, and I did visit community speed watch representatives at Buckland Dinnam earlier on today. So that was earlier on before I came here. Tomorrow, I'll just say two meetings, a meeting with Chris Jennings, who's the head of probation and prison service in the area, in the region. And that again has, it's a regular catch-up, but there's a specific conversation I'm having with him about offender management and some project that we've been working on to stand up housing and support packages around people coming out of prisons to prevent re-offending. And then I also have my monthly governance and scrutiny board, which oversees that day-to-day work of policing from that strategic level. And then, yes, I am doing some media stuff on Friday. Last Friday, I visited various commissioned services as well, particularly around that victim support piece. So that just gives you a flavour of the kind of breadth of work that's going on, that it is, it's a privilege to do this job, because I was just talking to one of your colleagues about the fact that in this role, I can make a difference. I can make sure there is investment and direction and strategic vision for Avon and Somerset Police as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sure various people have got questions. I think if I can ask Anita to pick this up first, given that she's been working closely in some of these areas.
Thank you, Andy. Anita Collier, and part of my role is very much involved around road safety. I'm just really wondering, in your view, how much of a role do you think AI is going to play in controlling road safety? And also, from your experience, what do you think the major benefits and dangers of AI might be within policing?
Thank you, Anita. That's a really interesting conversation. And I'm going to say that I haven't actually given a lot of thought to AI in road safety. But, you know, it is about patterns, it's about picking up on patterns. There will be patterns around road safety. So I'm going to take that one away and give it more thought. And by all means, share if you've got some ideas around AI, how AI could help with road safety. And I'm sure, given a bit more time, I could give you a more thoughtful response on that.
I know we're currently, we have an AI camera on a junction which is already monitoring seatbelt usage and mobile phone usage and can also be used for speed if that's what we choose. So I guess there is a part to play somewhere along the line, but I didn't know how big a feature it might be within Avon and Somerset.
I don't think I'd have classified this as AI, but that might, that's demonstrably my ignorance. There is a new, you know, there are new enforcement cars, you know, vehicles that are able to pick up on exactly that, you know, the sort of the point around the fatal five on road safety. And that, you know, can spot, as you say, safety belt wearing, that can spot people who are distracted because they're on their mobile phones, or most particularly, but, you know, other ways that this will spot not just the obvious speeding, but those other things that lead to tragic fatality. The wider point about AI in policing, it's playing a bigger and bigger role. And it is absolutely a useful tool. You know, we are the first, going to be the first to be using a piece of technology called Sose, which is being, using AI to be able to mine, you know, the incredible depth of digital evidence, which could take, you know, officer and staff time, it could take days, you know, weeks sometimes, perhaps months to go through some of those digital downloads or, you know, or in, as I say, all manner of digital evidence. This is actually able to, you know, mine that evidence much more effectively and therefore help turn around, you know, kind of cases much more quickly, which is a really valuable thing to do. Anything to do with AI, you know, there is obvious questions around the ethics or around the black box, what's being missed. You have to do dip sampling, you have to do all that kind of thing as well. There are other things that, you know, all sorts of questions around AI, which I am very, very well aware of. And funnily enough, was just on the way here, arranging a meeting in a couple of weeks with Alan Michael, who was the Police and Crime Commissioner in South Wales, when they were looking at bringing in facial technology, facial recognition technology. And Alan and my Chief Finance Officer and I will be getting together just to go through, like, what were the questions, what were the processes you went through? And he's sending me an essay that he's done on exactly that, the questioning, that kind of thing. Like I said, like, meeting with Rick and others, it's about making sure you're making informed choices and you're putting those safeguards in place as well. It's going to make, you know, done well, it's transformative.
Thanks. I've got questions from two or three councillors. But I'm going to jump in with one from the chair first. And I appreciate it's maybe more tactical and not something you can answer this evening. But given your strategy about neighbourhood policing visibility, I believe in Froom, the decision has recently been taken to move the public contact point out of the library and into the police station up by Sainsbury's, which is very less accessible than the town centre one. And I wonder if that should be revisited, given your strategy on trying to keep visible?
Thank you for that. I'm again going to take that one away, because I'm not sure. When did that happen? Is it, there will be reasons.
I'm not sure of the timings. I'm sure it's about efficient use of resources, et cetera.
You may want to take that, yes.
Thank you. Yeah, it is very much about the efficient use of resources and also for that better collaboration with the police, with the neighbourhood teams, being closer to it. And also having that capacity to have confidential meetings, because the library doesn't offer that, doesn't offer that space. The clerks that work down there feel very isolated. And also, I appreciate the accessibility. But the footfall up there where we are is incredible for those that travel up there, Sainsbury's, McDonald's, you name it, that there's queues every day of the week up there, having, you know, working there every day. So, and I know there was some discussion back when Andy Marsh was our Chief Constable around us relocating the actual police station where we are now down to the town centre. But our argument then was the fact that we're very accessible there. There's a free car park up at Wessex Fields for anybody to use and certainly good links to all of the RTOR roads. But we do appreciate comments, but.
Thank you. Carla, I think I got you next.
I'm just going to come back in on as well, following up from Rachel's point too, is that it's also about effectiveness. And I think Rachel's just illustrated the point around that, that actually, what's obvious may not be the most effective outcome in the sense, sorry, that sounded worse than I meant it to.
Hi, thank you. So a question around the reducing.
So a question around the reducing violent crime. And I appreciate your expertise and your background, working with violence against women and girls. And it's a question around allocation of budget in terms of prevention. So when I lived in Wiltshire, I know that there was a budget for working with young people in schools. There was a huge programme across many of the schools around increasing understanding of, first of all, what is domestic abuse, including, you know, coercive control, economic abuse, what is misogyny, online violence, and working with very creative, like drama, youth theatre, so that, I mean, it was very powerful, actually, kind of went in some of the sessions. And that doesn't seem to exist in Avon and Somerset unless I'm mistaken. And yet, that programme was incredibly effective. So what we're seeing in, you know, with our young people is a lot of hate crime, a lot of, you know, kind of online violence. Andrew Tate, if I can bear to use his name. And it feels like that's the opportunity, is to work at that stage when the kind of brainwashing starts. You know, I think it's something like one in three, by the time boys are 11, one in three have seen not just pornography, but violent pornography. So it's that kind of level that we're dealing with. And it feels like that's the place to start. And yet, there doesn't seem to be, unless I'm mistaken, much resources allocated to working with schools at that age.
Thank you. Yeah, it's kind of where do you start with this in terms of that education piece? Schools, there is some really good work going on. I mean, a lot of this is done in cooperation and collaboration with councils. And so we do have five councils in Avon and Somerset. So there's different elements of that work going on. Do you think there's more we could do? And I think this is a real, you know, I am really clear that we have to not just address, you know, kind of the, on the prevention piece, it's not just about addressing the behaviours, it's addressing that kind of mindset, if you like, and the misogyny that I'm afraid we are seeing. I completely agree with you about Andrew Tate. I completely, but it's not just him. It's, you know, the, there is work done, again, with kind of theatre groups, as you mentioned, with other ways of doing, there are other intervention programmes. Some of this is in schools, some of this is outside of schools. It's about reinforcing youth work as well. It's normalising what a good relationship looks like. It's normalising what good behaviours look like. It's the point around consent. There's masses of work to be done around this. I think I do know about some of the Wiltshire work, but I will take that away and make sure that, you know, if there are things that we could be doing more of, it's a question of, with finite resources, how much we put in place where? Because we are doing a lot through, for example, our Violence Reduction Partnership again, you know, but which comes through my office, and that goes directly into communities. But yes, there's more to do.
So I'm going to take Anne and then Nick. And there's a gentleman at the back wants to speak, and then Tracy. And then we'll wrap it up at that, if that's okay. So if I can take Anne first.
Hello, Anne Hills, councillor. I'm echoing quite a lot of what Carla has said, but taking it on a stage. So it's the woefully poor conviction rates for domestic abuse and the support for the victim and signposting to their escape route from controlling a coercive relationship. So the support that is available within the community. But how does a victim get out safely? And then the support through the court process. I am a magistrate, I see it, the appalling conviction rates that there are.
Yeah, thank you for raising this. It is, I mentioned sort of very quickly in my introductory comments, the extension of Opsoteria to domestic abuse. And it is precisely because of this, you know, that work is going on. I will say that Sarah Crewe, the chief constable in Avon and Somerset, is really committed to this work as well, as she was to the rape and serious sexual offences project, Bluestone, which became Opsoteria. This, you know, we've got to address this. We've, 20% of recorded crime is domestic abuse related. You're right in terms of, it can take a woman seven, eight, nine times of raising alarm before she will...
And 30 incidents before she raises an alarm. And if she doesn't die before that.
Exactly. So, you know, this is about, you know, addressing trust and confidence. It's about getting in there early enough to get the support there. And that's before you get somebody to a place where she will be able to take advantage of the independent domestic violence advisers. They're not necessarily going through a criminal justice process at that point. We do, I haven't mentioned this yet, but you will know as well as I do. You know, we don't have enough resources in policing. But when I look across at the court systems and the, you know, the state of the criminal justice system, then, you know, the wait times that there are in that system and when women who have been traumatised by their experiences. I did, actually, I talked about visiting victim services last Friday. One of the ones that I did visit was Nextlink, which is the commissioned service that, you know, I commissioned through my office for independent domestic violence advisers. And they are setting up, you know, a separate team that will be able to support women explicitly while they're waiting, so that the IDVs can deal with cases as they're coming in and that immediate support, if you like. But then you've got the checking in process and you've got that specialism of just keeping women feeling engaged, feeling that they're supported through what is an horrendously long period of time through a criminal justice process. So I'm very, you know, really pleased about what we might find through this pilot, through this project, and the change that it might make. There was also something done last summer, which was also really effective, called Operation Belie Eric, which was where IDVs, domestic violence advisers, went out with police officers. And actually, not only were they able to kind of get more support in more immediately in that situation, but it was also really effective for the officers to learn and work with those IDVs as well. So, you know, there is a lot of good work happening on this. Hopefully, we will see the level of getting to charge increase in the same way we have seen with RASO through Opsoteria. And we're not there yet with Opsoteria. So, you know, let's see how we do, you know, building up the DA profile too.
Okay, thanks. If I can take Nick and then the gentleman behind you. We do need to keep moving on this one now, sir.
Yes. Good evening, Claire. My name is Nick Dove, I'm a local town councillor, and I was a policeman for 35 years. And a lot of what we're talking about tonight, it's kind of not new sadly. However, it was really nice to hear you say at the start how important you saw neighbourhood policing, because I think that's the cornerstone of policing. It's really important, even though most of my career was in other areas. Their visible police presence, their visible presence on our streets is something I think should be ring-fenced and ring-fenced within the community. I'm part of a small group, myself and Rob, we meet regularly with a local policing team. They're great. They're really well-respected, they're known in the town. We had a meeting about a month ago when retailers met with them, and all the retailers I spoke to afterwards were so impressed, and they followed up with messages out to the community, it's really strong. However, they're under-resourced and they are often dragged away to cover other incidents in other parts of the force area. I think this should only be in truly exceptional circumstances and not routine. When you think the true measurement of police performance is the trust and confidence in which they're held. And studies and experience show that that's directly linked to traditional customer service values, telling the victim what actions have been taken and keeping them informed of the progress. I think it's really important that that is something that's a genuine focus. And, you know, you have the monopoly for a policing response in Avon and Somerset. You know, there's no one else to call, is there, when something bad happens? And I think that it would be really great, now that you've got control of investment and direction, if you would look at, I would say, a really simple tactical thing is to review the abstraction of neighbourhood policing officers, staff, that's officers and PCSOs, and look at what other police organisations have done, which is to introduce administrative support to neighbourhood policing teams. So when they come back from overnight or a few days' leave, someone hands them something that says, that's what's happened. Go out and speak to your public. Really powerful, and it's proven to have worked enormously well in other areas in terms of building confidence and trust in the policing. Thank you.
Nick, thank you very much. And, yeah, I mean, you can tell this is an area of importance to me, and having talked about it. I'm also really pleased to say that it is an area of importance for the government. And, you know, they are, they are on board with you in terms of highlighting this, hence the explicit investment. And, you know, we're kind of working through the numbers currently in in headquarters around how we, you know, make those numbers work and make them real in Avon and Somerset. I, the only thing I would say is that policing is under-resourced nationally. And Avon and Somerset is under-resourced relatively to the national picture right now. An officer really clearly, you know, with great clarity described to me the fact that Avon and Somerset is a double bed and we have a single duvet of policing to cover it. So, you know, there's, there is already a stretch. I will take away your idea around the admin support. I mean, it's sort of...
Can we move on to the next question? I think otherwise we're going to run over a lot of time. I know it's a very important point, Nick, yours always are. There was a gentleman behind you that wanted to...
Nick's already covered one, I'm sure.
Okay.
But thank you for coming to Somerset.
Yes.
That's a fruit, Rob.
Thanks, thanks for moving that on. I'm going to take Tracy and then very quickly Adam at the...
I'm happy it's been covered by you.
Okay. Adam, did you have anything you wanted to pick up?
Thank you, I'll be very quick. Thank you for coming to Frum as well. I don't believe your immediate predecessor did, so congratulations on the election last year. Well done. Personally, with an adult son now, teenage boys, if you have a teenage boy, they see more than adults do. We're kind of immune from seeing. Occasionally, I believe there's a gang problem in Frum. There has been certainly years ago, there probably still is. Personally, five years ago, when a close family member was attacked in the park, there was a good response from the police. We had a case officer visit, take a statement, took it very seriously. It went to court, the offender was charged and it went to, had a youth caution. So he was managed. There was an intervention as a result of that, us making an effort to go. And the police response was good, it wasn't perfect, but it was good. Two years ago, similar sort of thing happened in town, late at night. A gang of five or more, headbutts, broke my son's nose, went to hospital. So we phoned the police. It's not my fault, she wasn't here at the time. No case officer, no visit, make a phone call, complain, still, the phone call is all you get. Nothing was done, the evidence was the same, but no response. So I'm thinking, well, that's because of cuts, right? That's because of under-resourcing, police, there's no one to come out. But as a result, that offender is not an offender, he just got away with it. So I'm wondering what would happen now? And are you, at your office and the police on top of this, young men, young gangs, crime occasionally hurts people? What would the response be? I think that's important, the police response is vital. What would it be now? And how can you do something to make it better as it was years ago? Thank you.
Thank you. I am conscious of Andy staring at me and going... The shortest response I can give to that is, you know, naturally, you have a brilliant neighbourhood team, so it would be a fabulous response, of course. But that first point of contact is really, really important, and it's one that I'm acutely conscious of. The response, I will say, I mean, I know, you know, you can do this point to death, but there is a reality around resourcing that, and there's two elements to that. One is, we have seen £100 million worth of cuts to Avon and Somerset Police since 2010. There's a price to pay for that. And we've, you know, people across Avon and Somerset have been paying that price, because of that under-resourcing that you mentioned. But secondly, there was, just before the election, curiously enough, the last government put some investment back into, you know, increasing policing numbers again. Now, that means that about 40% of Avon and Somerset Police have fewer than four years' service and are in a lot of training. That goes to the abstractions point that you made as well. So, you know, there is, that almost exacerbates that under-resourcing point, because you've got, you've got numbers, but they're in training as well. You know, there is more work to be done around that. But ultimately, if you don't get the response that you are happy with, then you can come, you know, you can make a complaint. That's the PSD role, that's the investigation that, sorry, the interview I had earlier as well. So that really matters. And then there is a lot of work being done. I mentioned the Violence Reduction Partnership Unit that's run through my office and had spokes in each of the councils. We work very closely on that, getting involved if there are gangs, if there are young groups of young people, you know, involved in antisocial behaviour. ASB is obviously a priority as well. I'm going to shut up now before Andy shuts me up.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate you coming here this evening and sharing that with us. Really important.
It was a pleasure to be here, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So we're now, I think, ready to move on to item four of the agenda. One or two people may want to take the opportunity to slip off home to other things. But there's some big decisions to be made by council tonight, specifically looking at whether to approve the transfer of assets and services from Somerset Council. So I'll ask Peter to take the lead on that. Shall we just give it a minute or so while people get fresh drinks All right, folks, settle down now. Do you want to make a start then, Peter?
Well, good evening, everyone. And for those of you who don't know me, I'm Peter Wheelhouse. I'm the Deputy Town Clerk and Economic Development and Regeneration Manager. Firstly, I wanted to thank a number of colleagues who have worked with me on this report that was presented to you, and also councillors that we have liaised with, especially lead councillors in certain areas. I've got two pieces of good news for you. Number one, I'm not going to wade through a very comprehensive and thorough report, as much as we feel that producing a detailed report was essential to present all of the information that we feel is important in terms of this big decision tonight. The second point is that, and probably more fundamentally, and as you'll have heard from Bill Revins earlier, there is a distinct enthusiasm on the part of Somerset Council to transfer assets and services to Frimtown Council. What we're focusing on now, and we've had discussions with senior officers about this, is the importance of a comprehensive deal. And so we're continuing to work to try and ensure that that happens. And we're very hopeful it will be achieved very soon. So those are the pieces of good news to share with you. The third, before I get into the detail, the other thing I wanted to say is that the emphasis tonight is very much about securing council's approval to take on assets and services and agree some other proposals that we put to Somerset. We're also asking councillors to delegate authority to staff to put in place some interim management arrangements, and I'll come to those shortly. management arrangements, and I'll come to those shortly. All of that is very important, as the expectation is that we're going to have to move quite swiftly if we're going to achieve our objectives. We do appreciate that there will need to be further discussion about long-term management arrangements. We believe that that's probably for another day, and we will certainly be bringing a report to you as soon as we can around those longer-term management arrangements. So, just to move to the detail, first of all, a brief reminder of why we should get involved. And what you see in front of you are the four overarching themes that were set out in the devolution prospectus, which councils approved back in November. So the first one is about protecting and improving important community assets and services. The second one is about creating a thriving place here in Frum. The third is about improving sustainability and resilience, and the fourth one is about enhancing community wellbeing. Those are very important and underpin all of the proposals which are before you tonight. So to the first of the key elements that we'd like you to consider, and that's the Key Centre and the Mount Community Garden. As many of you will know, this was once a very thriving family and community centre, but is now underutilised. The vision is that it once more becomes a very vibrant, multipurpose, inclusive community space, serving not just the heart of the Mount community, but also other parts of South East Frum, and it really becomes an important part of a network of community spaces across the town. The benefits are primarily to improve the provision of early help to the community, to reduce the demand on high-cost services. It's also about addressing the shortage of childcare and meeting the needs of the wider community of all ages in this part of Frum. Our interim proposal, which we'll pick up later in the recommendations, is for Frimtown Council to take on the freehold of these assets and enable initially for Frimtown Council to manage those assets for a period of up to 12 months whilst we explore and put in place longer-term management arrangements. And the last point is that, and you'll be aware of this from the report that came to council in January, when a budget was set for devolution, that the estimated net cost of taking this step in 25/26 is just under £46,000. The next element is the Market Yard toilet block. We have asked Somerset that we can take on not just the toilets in the Market Yard, but also some adjoining accommodation that's within the block that you see there in the photograph. Our vision very much is to ensure that there is better management of the toilets, but we could also enable our growing activities in the town centre to be accommodated through the use of that adjoining accommodation, with ultimate benefits for town centre visitors, whether they're local residents or people coming in from outside to visit the town. Our interim proposal before you tonight is to take on the lease of that whole block, not just the toilets, but the whole block, and to contract out the cleaning and maintenance whilst we explore longer-term management arrangements for that asset. And our estimated cost currently for 25/26 is £60,000. Should at some point we decide to take on the refurbishment of those toilets, and one of the things that we've identified is the poor condition of the facilities, there's obviously a significantly higher cost, but we're not asking you tonight to take that decision. That's for us to explore further, and we will come back to you with a report later. Next, the weekly markets, and you heard from Bill Revins earlier that he has taken a decision that the weekly markets that are currently operated by Somerset Council will be transferred to those towns that want to take on that service. And we, of course, are amongst those towns. The other point that Bill didn't mention, but we have heard in writing, is that Somerset have also agreed that we can take on the space within the cattle market car park and use it at no cost in order to operate the market, should you take that decision tonight. So that's a very good piece of news. So the proposal before you is that we initially recruit freelance on a short-term contract to deliver that service from the 1st of April, whilst we expect to receive the rights and charter by deed of transfer. Initially, the proposal is that we operate under the powers that this council has under the Food Act 1984. And in fact, there is an amended recommendation later that I'll draw to your attention on that point. The vision is very straightforward, that after having taken on those weekly markets, that we work with the community in terms of improving those markets to benefit the local economy and the wider community. And it's proposed that we set up an advisory group, bringing together councillors, staff, market traders and other stakeholders to work on a longer-term strategy for markets in Frum. And we estimate the cost of this measure in 25/26 to be £49,000. Now, we do, of course, expect to receive income, so we expect the net cost to be lower than that. But in fact, you won't be surprised by these figures because they were shown in the budget that you approved back in January. Next, and this is probably one of the largest components of the entire package, and that is for us to take on the freehold of 48 open spaces and eight playparks, and also an open space at Mendip Drive on a 25-year lease. I wondered if Becca could very quickly show you the map that shows you... Well, initially, I'm just going to show you the list of sites that are involved in this. Now, I'm not asking you to interrogate this at this stage, but this is just to demonstrate how comprehensive, I guess, this proposal is. What we'll do is, we'll come back to that at the point, at the point at which we take questions. So we do have the technology, and we'll come back to it shortly, but we're determined that the technology will work for you later. If I could come back to the slideshow. So, the vision is to take on a significant number of new open spaces and playparks from Somerset Council, and this is all about growing the network of open spaces to benefit both local people and biodiversity. To enable us to maintain a much bigger estate, we do need capacity in terms of space for staff and equipment. And so part of the proposal to you tonight is to take on the lease of part of the Highways Depot, which is currently and will continue to be in the freehold ownership of Somerset Council. We also need to procure new equipment, and so we're seeking delegated authority tonight to go ahead with that. The overall estimated cost of all of this for 25/26 is in the region of £180,000. So it's a very substantial decision. Again, the budget for this was agreed in January, and so we have a very clear way of funding this, but I just wanted you to be aware of the cost. Rob, could you just confirm that?
There's some upfront costs which are a one-off, and yeah, so there's dilapidations for the depot, there's a ride-on mower, an electric vehicle. If you put all that together, that's about £130,000, and then there's ongoing costs.
Ongoing costs is more like £50,000.
Yeah. I'd need to look at the figures for the ongoing costs, but I want to reassure you that there's quite a high proportion of one-off costs in that.
Good, thank you.
I wonder if Laura could take us to the next slide, please? Okay, so finally, but by no means least, we're looking for a comprehensive deal, as I mentioned earlier, that not only enables us to take on assets and services, but also commits Somerset Council to working with the town council to work together on a number of strategic projects. And you'll have seen those listed in the report, and they're on the screen. There are much longer-term benefits to be achieved from securing a deal in those areas. Assuming that we can get this deal over the line, those other proposals would enable us to make use of various spaces in the Market Yard for community benefit, and will help to develop that area much, much more as a destination with benefits for the local economy. So, at that point, I'm going to stop for questions. I appreciate this has been a whistle-stop tour through the proposals that we have for you tonight, but very happy to answer any questions you may have. And there are other members of the team with me tonight. If I can't answer a question, I'm certain that someone else can. So over to you.
Thanks, Peter. Steve, do you want to come in first?
Just really a point of clarification, please, Peter. So tonight, we're just looking at the transfer of the assets that you mentioned. What we're going to do with them is subject to further discussion with the community stakeholders, et cetera. So those discussions will happen at a latter date. At the moment, we're just looking at the transfer of those assets for us, so we can decide what we want to do with them.
Absolutely right. I think, as I mentioned, there are some interim management proposals, which basically, if you approve them, would enable us to get on with the job in the short term. We will be looking at those longer-term management options in parallel, and we'll be coming back to you with a report.
Thanks. Nick, I think you were first...
I'm doing a bit too much talking tonight. Just a couple of quick things. Thanks for the feedback, Carla. Brilliant news about the markets. A couple of things. One, I didn't think it was terribly helpful that the market stall holders were told before we had a chance to get a message out from the town council. It felt a bit back-to-front, but it has happened. Do we get the market rights with it? Because that's the other thing that's really kind of important, is that we can make decisions of when we can hold markets and where.
We're fully expecting that to happen.
Brilliant.
The question is about timing.
Yeah.
That's why I suggested that in the first instance, we would operate under these powers under the Food Act.
Yeah, okay, that's great, thanks. And the last point is, is there any overage on the Key Centre?
Turn to Sarah on that one.
We've just had the heads of terms through. Somerset Council have the right to buy it back for a pound, giving it to us for a pound, and if we choose to sell it on for anything other than community use, it will be back to Somerset for a pound.
Thank you.
So they can't demand that we sell it back to them at any moment, can they? No. It's just if we want to sell it, we have to give them, like, first right of refusal.
Unless we're selling it on for community use.
Okay, so we could sell it on...
We can't sell it on for...
For a pound or something, we could sell it, but we...
Community use. Okay. Yes, I haven't tested that one out yet, but that's the...
Okay, thank you.
Lenka?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, in particular, the Key Centre, I don't know what the decisions are, but the Key Centre is really vital. It's the only resource in the Mount area, and it's just so underused. And, you know, we've been trying to book it to run extra sessions. Next week, we're going to have to do our sessions outside, deliver hot meals outside, because we're unable to use it at the moment. It's a really, you know, poor state, and we just can't wait for Frimtown Council to get on, and so we can use it properly.
Thanks, Lenka.
Please vote for it.
Adam, I think.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd say yes, please do this. Don't hear me to say that. But yeah, clearly Somerset Council is under a lot of pressure, and over recent years hasn't allowed the Key Centre to run down, which has been appalling. And I remember trying to stop that to some extent, but failing miserably. I also remember Mel talking about open spaces from Mendip 12, 13 years ago. Finally, we're saying yes. So well done.
Okay.
All of that. Also, one question on the Mendip Drive open space, 25-year lease, that's the only one that's not being freehold. I'm assuming that is because of some sort of development value, and therefore Somerset Council cannot legally give it away.
That's absolutely right. We had asked for the freehold, but they made it clear that the best they could do was 25 years.
But that's enough for most of us. Thanks.
Thanks. Max?
So I just wanted to thank Peter and the rest of the staff for putting this whole thing together. I think it reads really, really well. And I just want to make a few comments really... I mean, one, it's really good to see this finally, and it's really good to have Bill in the room and to kind of had a really good conversation with various people at Somerset about, you know, we feel like we're being slightly left behind here, and it's great to see action. So that's really, really good. I mean, you know, it's, you know, these are significant commitments. I really like the way that we've set out a vision, and that's the vision that was kind of, that was set out in the prospectus. So I think that's exactly the right thing and the right direction to go in. I'd just like people to think for a second about what would happen if we didn't take these things on, you know, if we lost the Key Centre, if all the open spaces kind of went to rack and ruin, if we didn't get the markets. All of those kinds of things, given the financial position of Somerset and the ongoing financial position of Somerset, would just deteriorate. They are vital assets to the town, and it's brilliant that we should have them. And it's really good to hear from Lenka about... And it was amazing, I think last time we spoke about this, there was just about every community group in the room were using the Key Centre at the time. So that wasn't deliberate, by the way, but it's a really, really important thing that we do, as well as all of the stuff that we're trying to do in town centre and all of that. It's really important that we also attend not just to the fabric of the town, but to the social fabric of this place. So I'm really glad to see it and fully support it. The only slight distinction I just want to make is about some of the, like, the vision, of course, is for more early help, absolutely. But I just want to make it really clear that we don't, and the prospectus tries to make it clear, that we don't necessarily see ourselves as the providers of early help. What we are are people who create the conditions where people who want to get involved in that can much more readily. And we know from the engagement exercise that was done, that one of the things that people really want is space, you know? And we talk about trying to enable and empower community groups. This is one of the ways to do it. But just want to make that key distinction. We're trying to create the conditions in which people who want to do that work can do that work, and owning the Key Centre is a key part of that.
Okay. Thank you. I think it's clear, many councillors have already done their homework. We've been discussing this both internally and externally for quite a long time, so it's great to get us to this point. Carla, if I can take your point, and then we'll maybe move to the recommendations.
It's probably a question either to Nikki or Hannah. So the interim coordinator that we're voting on to appoint or to go through the process of appointing, to run the Key Centre, what do you see them doing first off? What would be their kind of first job? I don't know if you're the right...
Maybe Sarah can take that for us.
The interim coordinator will be practically starting to get to know the building and run the building and facilitate the bookings. In terms of community activities, that will definitely be up to the community's team. In terms of community activities, that will definitely be up to the communities team, and it may be that a freelance interim coordinator might take on some of that, but primarily they'll be getting to know the building and running it for us, along with the facilities manager, should we get one.
Lenka?
Yeah, can I just tack on to that? Because there are obviously not many groups using the Key Centre, but there are some groups slightly monopolising the space. So we are having a meeting tomorrow, but yeah, just want to make sure that it's all like fair and the right community groups for that community are using the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Fiona?
Yeah, I just wanted to pick up on that point, because I guess I, I think maybe it's what Carla's sort of getting at slightly, is that to me, you say so, obviously there's the management of the building, but I think what sort of came out when we were, sort of, we met on site and sort of talked about it, is there's a really rich history to the Key Centre, and there are lots of people that are interested in it, and there's lots of different ideas floating around for how it could be used and how it could be managed. And I would really hope that this role, or, you know, someone from the communities team would also do that work as sort of coordinating and convening and seeing what ideas come out of it. Because I think, I'm also really keen that we keep our options open on all of these things as they go forward, and look at different, there may be something that can organically develop that we haven't thought of yet.
I think that's all part of that longer-term discussion of how it does get used. With your permission, I suggest we move to voting on these recommendations. Peter, I think you mentioned there was one that you wanted to change the wording off.
Yes, if Laura could put up the recommendation slide. So it's, you'll notice that the amendment is on the screen. It's on number five, number four, sorry. So it's important that if we intend to make use of this power, that there is a resolution to that effect, that this power being using Part 111 of the Food Act 1984 to enable us in the first instance to operate the market. So, so that's the amendment.
Fiona, you've got the obvious question.
Yeah, look, I wasn't going to ask you quite that bloody, but hold on. So why do we need that amendment? I, you know, I'm trusting that we do, but if we get the rights, surely we then have the power? Or is this, are we taking on the power before we have the rights?
Well, the likelihood is, is that there will be a deed of transfer, rights and the charter from Somerset Council. However, we're unsure at the moment of the timing of that. So given that we expect to have to operate the market from the 1st of April, we feel it's prudent to get a resolution on using this power. And then, of course, there is no doubt, everyone can look back to the minute of this and be clear that that is the power that we're operating under.
So this ensures continuity of the markets and that we can run them in the event that there is a delay between Somerset stopping running the markets and us actually getting the piece of paper that says we can run them in terms of...
The power is there already, it's just that it's important we minit it.
Okay. So can I have somebody propose this amendment? Sarah proposing, Max seconding, all those in favour of this amendment? That's carried unanimously? Yeah. I suggest we take the actual recommendations in chunks, so let's take the first three if we can, which are all related to the Key Centre. I've got Anne proposing, I've got Nick seconding, and I think that's unanimous. Yeah, that's unanimous, thank you. Okay. The next set are the market-related ones, including the amendment that we've just agreed. Okay, I've got Phil proposing, Fiona seconding, all those in favour, unanimous again. The third set then, I think, is about the market yard toilet block. And again, okay, we'll take Mark as proposing, I'll take Ben as seconding, all those in favour, that's unanimous as well. Open spaces, Nick and Carla, and unanimous as well. And the catch-all about everything else? Yeah, we're on. Oh, okay, they're all together. Well done, everybody. Thank you very much. Now, the final item on the agenda is one that needs to be held in a confidential session.
No.
Oh, sorry, you're right, we've got a verbal update on Badgers Hill.
Can I, it's Anne Hills. Can I just point out that I declare my interest, even though it's just a verbal update and there's no decision, but I am a director of the Frimtown Community Benefits Society based at Badgers Hill.
Thanks, Anne, and I'm guessing that Philip and Anita are...
Likewise, but it's Philip companion, not Anne Hills. We go into private. Can I just, if Bill's still online, can we just thank Bill and the people from Somerset just for the work that they put in to making this happen as well on the previous items? So thanks very much to Bill and everyone involved in that.
Yeah, let's have that on the minute. Thank you. Okay, sorry, I was about to jump too quickly, but yeah, let's take your Badgers Hill update.
Okay, this is just a very brief update on the repair and improvement project. Pleased to say that really good progress is being made in terms of the construction of the changing room block and the medical centre. So the roof is now on, on the changing room block, the electrical work has started, the internal stub partitions are up internally, and I'm also pleased to say that the, most of the new roof on the former gym block has been completed too. And the plumbing and heating installation at the clubhouse, which will serve both the clubhouse and the new changing room block, will be starting very shortly. My understanding is that, as before, that the work is scheduled to be completed around the middle of March, so I'll keep you posted.
Thank you very much. So just while we're still in full public session, obviously the next meeting will be 7pm on Wednesday, the 12th of March in here. Can I have a proposal that we now move into a private and confidential session, proposed by Steve, seconded by Anita? And Carla's just about to put her hand up to agree.
That's unanimous.
That's unanimous, yeah. So everybody who isn't a councillor, my thanks very much for your time attending. It's great to see everybody here this evening.